This conference will now be recorded.
I'll call the Wilmer City Council meeting to order for Monday, April 19th. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Ask.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance. Before we go to the next item on the agenda, I'd like to make some comments to Chief Felton, our police chief. Chief, at this time, it's a very difficult time to be a police officer. And I want you to know from the mayor's office, and I believe I'm speaking for the entire council, that we support our police officers, we respect our police officers, and we are every day proud of the work you do within our community. You build relationships, and building those relationships is hard work. It's not easy. You have to roll your sleeves up, you have to get after it, and you do that with pride, honesty, integrity, and dedication every day. To the citizens of Wilmer, when we meet our police officers on the street, feel free to give them a high five, or give them a hand wave, or something like that to acknowledge the work that they do. They're working in very, very difficult times. The events that have happened and transposed over the last year-plus in the state of Minnesota only increases my respect for law enforcement within our community. The events that happened a week ago, and again last night, show that police officers are human. But at the same time, we, as citizens, need to respect our police officers, we need to follow their directions, we need to follow their commands, and we need to do so in a way that brings the community together. So Chief Felton, I want to tell you, I respect you, I appreciate you and the officers of Wilmer Police Department, I'm very glad that you're here. The leadership that you provide to our organization is second to none in the state, and I really appreciate what you do. So let's give our police officers, not only here with the Wilmer Police Department, but the Canoe County Sheriff's Office, our correction officers, the DNR, State Patrol, and everybody, let's give them a round of applause this evening. Thank you for what you do. Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Next, we have the consent items. Ms. Swedberg.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on tonight's consent agenda, we have, for council's approval, the city council minutes of April 5th, the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission minutes of April 12th, planning commission minutes of April 7th, a council payable report of April 1 through April 14, a resolution declaring surplus equipment and authorizing sale at public auction, an application for exempt permit from the Pheasants Forever Canoe High County Number 2, Public Works Safety Committee minutes of April 8th, resolution for professional services agreement for downtown streetscape, a resolution, Minnesota DNR Shade Tree Program Bonding Grant Application, resolution for MPCA Alternative Landscaping Equipment Grant Application, resolution for the purchase of a 2021 Chevy pickup and utility box for the wastewater treatment plant in the amount of $93,037.64, resolution to award project number 2108, Seal Coat bid to Camco Incorporated in the amount of $70,000, Finance Committee minutes of April 8th, a resolution for amendment to Boyke land leases, resolution for West Central Hockey Summer Ice Agreement and Budget Amendment, a resolution for Wilmer Baseball Swanson Field Advertising Agreement, resolution for the city facility use policy and procedures, a resolution to set the city municipal liability coverage limits, resolution for the acknowledgement of first quarter 2021 donations, the Community Development Committee minutes of April 12th, a resolution to accept FAA's Airport Coronavirus Relief Grant Program, a resolution to apply for and accept 2021 Project Assistant Funds Grant through Rethos and Minnesota Main Street, for council's acceptance, a building report for the month of March, and for council's information, a letter regarding date of city hall community center financing meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Second.
Motion by Osmus, seconded by Davis to approve the consent items. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien. Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion, that resolution passes as well. Next, we'll have a public hearing to amend ordinance number 1060 zoning sections 2.2 and 6.1 related to multifamily housing in the general business district. Ms. Swedberg. Again, for the public to call in on this, and you must dial the area code as well, the number is 320-335-7135, and I will open the public hearing. Ms. Swedberg.
Thank you, mayor members of the council. Tonight before, we've got a public hearing to amend the zoning ordinance to allow multifamily housing in the general business district. This item did go before Planning Commission. It was introduced at our last city council meeting, and it was partially, this item was partially began because of the interest of a developer in town, but upon further discussion internally and reviewing some other city ordinances, we, Planning Commission, came to the decision that it was time to amend this ordinance to make this allowance, just because of kind of the changing and amending practices, if you will, for a commercial zone, really to increase the ability for residents to live closer to work, or amenities that might be available to them, or a variety of different things, as well as to kind of adapt to the market for multifamily housing. A lot of developers look for places that have some visibility, such as kind of a second-tier commercial area, that might not be the land prices you see along First Street, or Highway 12, or your main arterial street, but something that still has a bit of traffic, so that residents or future community members might see those developments and kind of have them top of mind, if you will. So it would be Planning Commission and staff's recommendation to go ahead and conduct this public hearing, and then ask council review and approve this text amendment.
Okay, so we have heard from staff. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak to this issue? Again, the call-in number is 320-335-7135. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak?
Mr. Mayor, we have no callers at this time.
Hey, I'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council table. Council, what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Fagerly, seconded by Osmus to approve amending the ordinance 1060 zoning section 2.2 and 6.1 related to multifamily housing. Discussion from council. Roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Eight present, eight ayes, zero nays. Sorry.
That resolution passes. Thank you, Ms. Swedberg. Next is item number nine, which is consider setting the public hearing for ordinance amending Wilmer zoning ordinance section 3S related to driveway standards. Ms. Swedberg.
Thank you. Mayor members of the council, the second ordinance amendment we have before you tonight is to set a public hearing for your next city council meeting, publish it by summary. This ordinance amendment is related to driveway access standards, and this item has come up a number of times, both internally with staff and during Planning Commission's review of projects. As it stands right now, we don't have physical standards. We've got some policies in place for commercial and residential standards for driveways, but there's nothing that actually in an ordinance sets those standards for staff to enforce in reviewing with Planning Commission, and I do want to thank our intern, Alec, in Planning and Development, who's also put a lot of time and effort into this amendment. It was Planning Commission's request and determination to go ahead and set some standards so that staff has an equitable practice of going to these set standards and applying them to everybody across the board. It's really, the language pretty much captures what our standard practice is right now. The maximum driveway width that would be allowed in a commercial area would be 32 feet, and in industrial and in residential, that width maximum is 24 feet. We capture distances from street intersections for traffic safety, distances between driveways and lot lines, which reflect our setbacks that currently exist. We set maximum number of up to two for residential properties, but to have that second driveway standard, or that second driveway curb cut, your lot has to be a certain width, and then we also encourage and set some standards to make sure that if there is an option to go on a lower traffic street versus a higher traffic street, this ordinance requires you to go on that lower traffic street again for safety purposes. The creation of this was run through engineering, as well as our city attorney, both of which have approved of the language before you tonight. So it would be staff recommendation and Planning Commission recommendation to pass two resolutions tonight. The first, again, setting that ordinance, or setting the public hearing, excuse me, and the second to publish by summary for notice of that. And I should also mention, we are, we do have a letter drafted to send out to some of our housing developers and just other construction companies in town, so that they're aware of these changes that will go into effect in May.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for May 3rd at 7:01.
Second.
Motion by Fagerly, seconded by Davis to set the public hearing for May 3rd at 7:01 PM. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Next, we have the authorization to publish by summary. Look for a motion for that as well.
So moved. Second.
Motion been made and seconded to publish by summary. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say a few words to Ms. Swedberg. Congratulations on your new position with the EDC. You'll be really missed by the city. I remember when you came here a few years ago, just graduate out of Bemidji State, young whippersnapper. Boy, did you know your stuff. You brought so much excitement and enthusiasm. You were a great employee, and you're going to be missed dearly. But we do know where you're going to be, so if we have any questions, we're going to be visiting you. But thank you again for working for the city, and good luck in your new position.
Sarah, I as well want to thank you for your time and commitment to the city, Wilmer. You're always a bundle of energy and joy. Your smile is infectious, and it's a great loss for the city, but it is, it's encouraging to know that you're only going to be across town, and Aaron will make sure that you're in front of us on a regular basis, I'm sure. So, great work, well-deserved change in occupation, and I know you'll do well over there as well. So, thank you again for your service to the city. We do appreciate it, so, thank you very much.
I think Mr. O'Brien has...
Mr. O'Brien? Councilmember O'Brien?
I was not aware that Sarah was a beaver.
Oh, yes. That's your hometown, isn't it, up that way? Yeah, so, yeah.
I've had five generations that went to Bemidji, including me.
Right. Congratulations.
I decided to throw that out there, Sarah.
Congratulations, Ms. Swedberg, we appreciate that, so. Okay, you can stick around for the rest of the meeting if you want to, but if you want to watch, do whatever else you need to do, we understand that as well, so, thank you for your work. Next, we have consideration of an approval for the AFSMI Council 65 Public Works Unit Labor Contract. Mr. Grammets.
Mr. Councilmembers, the city and the AFSMI Council Number 65, which represents a public works unit, have come to agreement on the terms. We do have a signed contract that was submitted this afternoon by AFSMI, so in exchange for their signature, I'm requesting that the city be authorized to sign the contract on behalf of the city and enter into the labor agreement. The changes are predominantly the identical, aside from a couple of small items, to the LALS contract that was approved back in, you know, November-ish of 2020. So we're being consistent with the agreements, and as you'll see on the next item, the AFSMI Council 65 General Unit, in essence, has predominantly the same verbiage, but this particular agenda item, they had a Columbus Day holiday, which was then transitioned to the day after Thanksgiving, like the other contracts already have. So again, we're trying to gain consistency within the organization. Insurance, health insurance premium are listed as dollar amounts of $579.22 for single and $15.26.26 for family coverage, which again is consistent with the prior agreement. It is a two-year agreement. And, let me get back my sheet here, and it has general adjustments of 2% in 2021 and 2022, which again was consistent to a prior agreement that the city entered into. And then, quite honestly, there was a lot of miscellaneous little adjustments, changing of font, and removing city and placing employer, just cleaning it up as far as an official contract probably should be stated. And then, at the end, there is a memorandum of understanding, which is consistent with prior agreements we've approved, which was the 2021 premiums for health insurance, the process stays the same, but in 2022, any increase that shows up above the dollar amounts listed earlier will be shared 50/50 between the employer and the employee. So that is a very large step in the direction that the city council had hoped to obtain, and so I would therefore submit the motion to the city council to adopt the labor contract with AFSMI Council Number 65 Public Works Unit.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion made by Davis, seconded by Osmus to approve the AFSMI Council Number 65 Public Works Labor Contract. Discussion. Sheen in hearing, then roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion, that resolution passes. Next, we have a consideration of the approval of the AFSMI contract for 2122 with the General Unit Council 65. Mr. Grammets.
Again, many of the comments I made for the Public Works Unit apply to the AFSMI Council 65 General Unit. There are a few different slight changes that you'll find in this labor contract, which is different than the LALS or the Public Works Unit, and that's simply because you have to negotiate in good faith with each separate group, and sometimes you, you know, the give and take amounts to some minor changes, and alludes to differences between the contracts. But generally, it is about the same terms as we've held previously with LALS and also now Public Works. The one change, I'll just go through the list, and that is, instead of having 16 steps in vacation accrual, we've reduced that down to six steps. The beginning and the end are still the same, it's just how many steps there are in the middle. You know, it seemed like a kind of a small thing, but it was, it was an important step in getting the contract approved by this particular group. The health insurance is identical, it's a two-year agreement, identical, the general wage adjustment, 2% and 2% is identical. I did not mention at the last item, but these are retroactive to January of 2021, which is historically done, but it needs to be negotiated out, like all the other issues, and this was something that the employer agreed to. Adjustments to the contract incorporating past MOUs that we had entered into, so those MOUs, which were separate documents, are actually now included into the main part of the labor contract. Then there were changes of font and dates, and city to employer. There are two MOUs that will go along with the contract. The first one, as I stated before, was after 2021 is over. If there is a health insurance, employee health insurance increase for 2022, the employer and employee will share 50/50 that increase, just as we have for the other labor organizations. And the second MOU was to provide two additional vacation days to be used within calendar year 2021. So between the signing of this document and the end of 2021, all the employees with the Ned Bargaining Unit would have to use those days. They don't, and it's use it or lose it, they don't get to carry them over, they're not, in essence, you know, cashing them out for anything. They are virtually use them, or they're gone. And that's what it took in the mediation to get both sides to agree to an acceptable contract, and again, that is what I would recommend the city council approve, so that this contract can then move forward. They have all, the union has already signed the signature page on this particular contract also, and it's just waiting, there's some typos and some numbers that need just to be, need to be cleaned up. Our city attorney is aware of those, and will be getting those put in there, but all that's really waiting at this point in time is the signature of the city to put this contract into effect.
So I would like to make the motion.
Motion been made to approve the AFSMI Council 65 Public Works, General Unit Labor Contract Changes. Second.
Second.
Second by Osmus, motion by Davis. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Next, we have the consideration, before I do that, staff, I'd like to send my appreciation for your diligence in getting these contracts settled, and I know it takes a lot of work to get that done, and I greatly appreciate the work that you did in following the direction of council. So, city administrator and our HR personnel, along with our department directors, I'm sure worked on this pretty diligently, so thank you for your work, we do appreciate that. Next, we have a consideration of Speak Your Peace Civility Project. Councilmember Davis.
All right. Overview, on March 29th, 2021, we held a work session to receive information relating to a community-based campaign to urge citizens to communicate in a more respectful way. This includes nine simple tools for practicing civility. Pay attention, listen, be inclusive, do not gossip, show respect, seek common ground, repair damaged relationships, use constructive language, and take responsibility. Adopting these nine simple tools can assist the city and all its citizens in improving the level of communication in a more respectful and effective way. And I would like to adopt, or make a motion to adopt a resolution accepting the nine updated tools of civility.
Second.
Motion by Davis, seconded by Osmus to move forward the consideration of the Speak Your Peace Civility Project and the nine pieces that go along with that. Discussion from council. Councilmember Butterfield. Is there going to be any cost to this? I...
No.
The only cost would be as if the city were to make up some pamphlets and stuff like that, but that would be it, I think. Mr. Grammets, or city administrator.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and city, Mr. Mayor and city council members, the, in anticipation of this, and I didn't bring them along, and I forgot they're sitting in my office, we have incurred, you know, some cards, which are to be, you know, kind of carried with the individuals, the cost to make these cards, and also some posters to put up in our billboards in our community facilities, to let people know that this program is something that the city council, you know, would support. So other than that, no additional cost.
So there's not a membership fee to join this?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
That's my understanding as well. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So are all of our boards and commission going to get these little cards? Because I have a problem with the Human Rights Commission. They gossip quite a bit, and they actually name people's names there that they're going after, and that's not right. So are you going to change their ways then too, since you're on that committee?
The intent would be, is that all boards and commissions, if the council adopts this, would be required to follow this, and if that is happening at the Human Rights Commission, that certainly would be an item that would be addressed with them, and they would be told that that is not acceptable behavior.
Okay, what happens then if there is a violation?
Councilmember Davis.
Here's how I see this working. So, you know, before, it's hard to sit there and say, hey, we're gossiping, please stop. Now, we have this, and we can say, remember, we agreed to this, and I feel like we're going in a wrong direction with our conversation. That's what this is for.
Okay, because it just happened here, the last two meetings ago, and it happened last fall, and I know these people, so it is not right. It's, it's pretty sad.
Well, I think this is one of the reasons why we need it, is... Well, I think this is one of the reasons why we need it, is because before, we just had to have the opportunity to either been there and whatever. Now we'll have a tool that we'll be able to say, hey, you know, the council adopted this, and these are the rules. Maybe taking it one step up, Councilmember Nelson.
I just think, as it was discussed before, I think it's something that you ask all the boards put on their agenda to adopt and to review why it is important and, and with that. And the cards reinforce it. The, letting the community know that this is something that we are working on and that we're planning to do. But I do think that you have to ask the different boards and commissions to actually review it and adopt it, just like we are looking at doing tonight. So inappropriate behavior is, is hard for all of us. And so it's a, I think, needs to be addressed in each different location that we're working in.
Additional comments? Mr. O'Brien. Uh, Ms., Councilmember O'Brien, followed by our city administrator, Councilmember O'Brien.
I, I'm gonna vote for this, but really, I, I've been through this stuff, I can't count the number of times. Uh, I think it's disgusting that we have to carry a card around to be good to each other. Uh, if that's what it takes, hey, I'm all for it, but wow, we've come to this? That we've got to actually make regulations to be good to each other? Man, I just don't get it. But like I said, you know, I'm not gonna make waves, I'll vote for it, but that's my feeling. My feeling is, man, I'm gonna be good to people because that's what you're supposed to do. I, I just don't get it, why we have to go to this.
Well, I'll just respond to that a little bit. I think sometimes, and I'm guilty of this, Councilmember O'Brien, I will be making a comment, and I will be thinking that I'm talking just like I'm talking to somebody. And my wife can attest to this. And I won't realize that I'm saying something in a tone that can be perceived as being negative or being confrontational. And council members have pointed this out to me, and they've said to me, Mr. Mayor, at times it seems that you do X. And I don't even know I do it. And so I don't think it's for the intentional time when we're being disrespectful or whatever, because we all know when we're, when we're being that. It's for the unintentional times, like what Councilmember Davis said. So that's how I view it, because there's times when I'm saying something, and I'm not realizing that I'm being confrontational until after I get home and I get a phone call from a citizen, or a council member pulls me aside after the meeting and says, Mr. Mayor, do you know what you said was very hurtful to so-and-so? It wasn't my intent, and had I known that, I could have apologized at the time, and then we could have moved forward. So I think it's a tool in the toolbox, is what I think it is, so, Mr. Graham.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers, we also can provide the video that was presented to us, you know, like a month ago. And the speaker also provided us with his PowerPoint afterwards, because it didn't, it wasn't showing up on, on the, the screen. So we have his video, we have his PowerPoint, we've got, you know, some paper materials that is from the program. And I think we can provide all of that to every board, commission, or committee, so that they can understand the program and, and what it's, you know, used for. And again, you know, sometimes the simplest things, as the speaker said last time, he came out and said, this is, this is goofy, this is stuff we learned in kindergarten, why should we be doing this? And yet, he's the biggest proponent of this particular program right now. Because he was converted to, because of its simplicity, it says, here's how I'm gonna treat you, and I hope you treat me this way. And if you, and if you don't, then I'm gonna say, we agreed to this, we agreed you were gonna be respectful. So let's, let's come back to being respectful. And that's, that's all it does. There's no penalty, you, you have to sit in a corner because you didn't do something? It's self-policed. You're supposed to say, oh, yep, I agree, I understand, I, let me say it a different way. Or, you know, explain what you were trying to say. And also, listen while somebody else is speaking. Not, not formulate your answer right away. I mean, so it's pretty simple stuff, but we have the ability, I think, to present information to our employees, to our committees, boards and commissions, so that they understand what this is all about. And, you know, if it changes one activity or one interaction, it might be well worth it just for that alone.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thanks. I just pulled out my card, the edges are worn, but I don't see it as a regulation, I see it as a reminder. And what it actually says on here is to urge citizens, urge us to communicate in a more respectful way. And I don't see how we could not want to do that.
Additional comments, Councilmember O'Brien.
I'm just gonna throw this out, I don't know if you got some extra time on your hands. Joe Schmidt has an excellent, excellent program, if you Google it, and you can listen to his, he's got a really good, based on this, what you're talking about, it goes much deeper than this. But it's, it's very good, a lot of businesses use it, a lot of corporations use it. If you got time, I just make a suggestion, Google it and go on and watch it.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second, additional discussion, otherwise we're ready to vote. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Bagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you, that, that resolution passes. Thank you, council, for adopting this. You know, our citizens came to us a number of years ago with this. Councilmember Davis was actually on, I'm sorry, Councilmember Nelson was actually on that committee that worked on that when it was presented to us, and then it was presented again a couple of years ago, and then now this time again. So I think this is good work, this is heavy lifting. And it comes at a perfect time when we're looking for a new city administrator, if we come with a clean slate and move forward, I think it's very good. Next, we have a consideration of eliminating the current city council committee structure and implementing direct city administrator to city council agenda process. Mister, or a city administrator, Mr. Graham.
Mayor and City Councilmembers, there's been discussion, you know, over the last, you know, almost two years that I've been here about the, the work sessions and the committee structure, and maybe the, some of the negatives of both and, and how the city council has tried to utilize both in the past. And after my review, I, I had spoken up, you know, probably in the, in the last year, and said, you know, something that might simplify things and make them a little bit more straightforward. And, you know, the full city council gets all the information at one time, and that's in the agenda of, for the city council as compared to committees. And there had been discussion in the past about looking into it. And I believe it was at the month ago meeting, it was put on the table for, you know, a discussion again. And I was instructed to come back with a recommendation. Now, one of the issues, I think, that, that I mentioned at the last meeting when we talked about this was that I'd, I'd guessed that 90% of the cities in Minnesota use a straight from, from staff, department heads to their administrative, chief administrative officer, whether that's the city clerk, or whether that's the city administrator or city manager. And that individual with the department heads creates the agenda items, creates the agenda, and sends it out on Friday for the Monday city council meeting. It's, it's the majority way of doing things, and yet, I also understand that every city can have its own uniqueness, which might be committees, or it might be work sessions, or whatever. And, and that's not a strike, a negative strike against any of those. All I'm saying is, you know, 90% of the cities, of which there are over 800 cities in Minnesota, that 90% of them use the direct-through-the-staff approach to preparing an agenda and then submitting it on to the city council. And it is, it is my belief that some of the things that I've heard over the past, you know, almost two years, some of those could be resolved by this process, and that's why I'm recommending it. I would, I, you're not gonna hurt my feelings if you say, no, I want to stay with the committee structure. You're not gonna hurt my feelings if you say, I want to go to the work sessions again. I want to try that one more time. I am just saying, from a recommendation from the current city administrator, I would try this to see if some of those issues resolve themselves by going to a different process. I don't know that there are any other processes that, in preparation, this is like the main three that you've had. But this is, is, this is the generally accepted one, and I, I guess I would recommend trying it and seeing if that helps. Now, having said that, this city council meeting has been about the most efficient and effective city council meeting that I've had since arriving here in June of 2019. And so it's really hard for me to almost recommend to you that you should try something different after we've honed the process to, to a very effective meeting at the council meeting. You know, if it wasn't for this issue, we'd be done in 40 minutes tonight, and that's, that's exemplary. So, again, having said that, this is, this is your alternative, and attached, you would have the resolution if you wanted to pursue that. But again, it's strictly a, a policy decision of the city council, how they want to operate. And I, I think that's about all I can, you know, say on, on, on the issue. I think we've come a long ways. This might be better, this might end up being worse, I, I don't know. The only way to find out is to try it.
Thank you, Administrator Graham, it's for your comments. And, you know, there was discussion as, is this something we should try to address before the new administrator's here or after the new administrator gets here? And I was a strong proponent of, let's talk about it, and so that as soon as the new administrator starts, there's not something on their plate that they've got a crisis they have to deal with. So I agree with you 100%, this meeting has been very effective. I think that just a couple tweaks that you and I talked about back in, I think it was December, January timeframe of, Marvin, why don't you try this? I think that when I presented that to the council, they, you know, ratified that, and we've been doing a fairly good job on that, so. So yeah, tonight's meeting has gone very smoothly, we've gotten a lot of good business done, and it hasn't taken a lot of time. Council was prepared, council was ready to act, and that's why we're in the situation we are. So I'm gonna be quiet, as quiet as I can be. And council, I want to hear from you, and then if there is a desire to introduce a motion to go this direction, again, I will stand along with the city administrator. If that's the desire of the council, that's what we'll do. But you're not gonna hurt the mayor's feelings if you go one way or the other. I did feel pretty strongly about this before we made the tweaks. But after having made the tweaks, it seems like we've really made some improvements. So I am good to go with, with whichever way the council chooses to go. So let's open up for discussion.
You don't want the motion first before we discuss it?
I think on this one, we maybe should have the discussion first, in case there is not a desire to do a motion. But I'm, I'm fine if somebody wants to make a motion, I'm fine with that. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. I'm not opposed to making changes, but I, I do not believe that this is the right time for us to consider a different structure. Our plate is full, we're having staff transitions, we have lots of projects going on. We have not, I, I think, looked at how we will function if we go away from committees. My, my concern, I think, with that is just a time commitment. We have a terrible time, we worked hard with the committee structure to find times that worked for committee members. There were, there were 24 items on our consent agenda tonight. Over half of them, I didn't count them, but I'm, over half of them were reviewed in detail by some council members. The opportunity was there for, for us to have access to that information before those decisions were made. I do think it's important for us, it's been since July 2017 that we've had a retreat or a work session to set priorities. If we're gonna consider a different format, I think we need to do that annually. We're going to need to change truth and taxation. If we're going to simplify our budgeting, or our approval of budgeting items, I think that takes a different look at, having to look at the budget differently, whether it's strictly the capital improvement projects. When we approve the budget now, the comments are always made, we'll leave it in the budget, and we'll talk about it and approve it later with that. If there is streamlining that needs to be done, I think it needs to go back to that timeframe. We just took steps to talk about speak your peace and respecting each other. Part of the dilemma that's happened at the committee meetings is a lack of respect and the challenges that were going on, even with some of the minutes and some of those. I think we've resolved that somewhat by the process that's put in place with some of these consent items. I think we have worked hard to come up with a better, efficient way, and I think we need to stay with that right now. I truly believe we're better off by the work that's being done at the committee level. Is there more streamlining that can be done? More than likely, yes. But we're also seeing changes in our staff, and I think it's an opportunity to look at the changes when we get new staff in place too. So I cannot support changing our structure right now.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Osmus, followed by Plowman.
Okay. I would like to see us go to the direct structure, because I still like the idea of all council members getting the same information at the same time. And even especially with all of the openings that we have right now, I feel like that's a lot of responsibility on labor. And then we are all in the loop of what is happening with our labor openings, our positions. I also think it's a good opportunity for new council members to learn finance, to be able to be a part of, even though I know they can listen in on those. I, and I personally, I would rather have a long session for everybody on Monday night that everybody all has on their calendar, we know that commitment, versus the other, the other nights of the week for the committee structure. So I would be in favor of going to the direct committees, the structure at council meetings.
Councilmember Plowman, followed by Councilmember Butterfield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity to comment on this before we vote on it. I've been vocal in the past about how I am in favor of the committee structure. I acknowledge the fact that it does take more time, scheduling time. We have to be more involved and more accountable. And I am also aware that, that each committee meeting does not involve all city council members. And so I understand that that's a concern of individuals on the council. However, just a couple things. I, I do believe that the last time that we had moved to the work session format, after having been in both the committee format and the work session format, I don't believe that during that time period, I don't believe that the city council was being informed well enough. We, we did not have the time to be presented all of the information necessary to make well-informed decisions, especially the same night. The, the depth and the detail of the information necessary was just not able to be presented. That wasn't the fault of staff, that wasn't the fault of council, that wasn't the fault of the mayor's office, that was the fault of nobody, just the clock. We did not have enough time, it was logistically not feasible. Secondarily, I think the point was well-made by our city administrator, but, but also by the mayor. And that was, the mayor did take a step after proposing the idea that we consider going back to work sessions. we consider going back to work sessions in the interest of, of efficiency and in the interest of transparency. The mayor did suggest that we tweak our city council agendas in the way that we report our committee meetings and, and the way that we conduct our city council meetings. And I believe that although there is a learning curve in it, and we still do have some learning to do, as noted by our administrator and our mayor tonight, I believe that was a good idea, and I believe that that idea is currently being executed, and it is working. We have gone through quite a few meetings doing it that way, and we have had some important issues that have come up, that did arise and did come up as a part of the committee structure, and we were very able to easily pull those aside and discuss those separately without encumbering all of our time on all the other items from those separate committees. We were able to pull out the ones that were the most important, the ones that the full council did need to hear all of the information from. We were able to do that efficiently, we were able to do that to the point that we could have good discussion, that we can make good decisions, and we were still able to keep our, our times reasonable. And so for that reason, I appreciate the, you know, I appreciate the tweaks that were suggested at the time by the mayor and that were implemented by the council. I think that we still have things to learn, and we still have steps to take, but I believe if we continue on this trajectory, it offers us the best of both worlds. It offers us the opportunity to do that committee work that allows us to get in-depth and allows us to get detailed within the committee itself, but then also to pull those items necessary and have a full council discussion around those items that, that really deserve that full discussion. And I understand it's more of a commitment, but this is what, this is what we signed up for, and it's, it's not easy for myself either to, to block out the time, but it's something that I'm willing to do, I believe is important, and I think, I think our constituents deserve that time as well. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Councilmember Butterfield.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Councilmember Nelson. Right now is just not the right time to do this. We have too much stuff going on right now that we need to take care of first.
Councilmember Osk.
I don't know that there's a perfect system out there, you know, the three that Mr. Grammets mentioned, I'm not sure that any of them is perfect, but I don't think the committee structure works. You know, the information piece has been talked about a lot. Honestly, that's not a top concern of mine, but I just don't, I don't think it's a good way for the nine of us to communicate with each other. Half of us have a conversation without the other five, and, and then that conversation is changed because the other five weren't there for the first one, and four of us are repeating the, the conversation again. I think it's inefficient, it's repetitive, it's, it's set up in a manner in which some committees have greater responsibilities and input than others. I think it takes a lot of staff hours, which I don't think has been talked about yet tonight. But lastly, and maybe most importantly, I just, it can not only like slow down a good and productive, creative idea for moving forward, but I think it could actually stop a proposal that the majority of us on the full city council would approve of. I mean, in theory, something that, that, that six of us and the mayor could fully be totally supportive of can be stopped if it goes to the right committee where the two people that are against it can vote against it at the committee level, and then it never moves forward. And, and I don't think that's good government, and even if I'm one of those two members on that particular issue, I don't think that's good government, I don't think it serves the foundational values of, of inclusivity and equality and, and democracy that, that we're supportive of. And I do appreciate the concerns that Councilwoman Nelson brings up about the timing. We most certainly do have a lot on our plate right now, we have some major priorities that need to be addressed. However, I just remain convinced that this existing structure hinders our efficiency, it hinders our communication, hinders us from fully engaging in the issues that are, the important issues that are in front of us right now. And so, I mean, I think we need all the help that we can get to engage in those matters fully, where all of us are together in conversation and discussing that openly and transparently in front of the community. That's how I'd like to, you know, address those important topics as we move forward. And so, I'm, I'm in favor of doing that direct model, and I'm in favor of doing it now and not proposing a decision that's come before this, maybe not this council, but the Wilmer City Council numerous times in the past year or so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions? Councilmember, see Councilmember Davis's hand up?
Yeah.
Councilmember Davis, then followed by Nelson.
In my mind, I mean, I know we have a lot on our plate right now, but that's the best time for all of us to work together as a team, so.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Councilmember Fagerly wanted to speak too. The, the real concern I think I have is, we have more work to do than showing up on a Monday night at 7:00. I'm really not interested in sitting here from 7:00 to 11:00 to try to accommodate everyone hearing the same thing. We will not do justice to the work that we need to do. I've not heard any suggestions for when we can meet other times, and I am concerned that when we try to schedule meetings, it is very difficult for, for us to get a meeting scheduled with that. I, the last, the last time this was brought up, some suggestions for how we're going to do it, I don't know that we can, if, if we can start earlier in the evening or go to a day meeting, or, you know, if there's a time, if you want to talk about staff efficiencies, then let's meet during the day while staff is working and we don't, they don't have to work at night. But I don't see that we've come up with a solution to that. I also think that, that we've heard a lot about labor. I am concerned. I am concerned with the committee structures to some degree, but just like we do in finance, if there's a subject that everyone should hear, hold a full, hold a full labor meeting, invite the full council. If it's not something that, that four people are comfortable making a decision on, there can be a different way to do that. I, I do not see, want to go forward with this until we've come up with some solutions or how we're going to come up with the time to commit to doing the work that needs to be done by this council. If we all want to hear everything, then we need to be available, and we need to change the timeframes that we're available.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This kind of sounds like a school referendum, it gets defeated and then it comes back the next year, next year, but I think the way it's going now is working pretty well. I mean, I didn't like reading the minutes, even though I got a great radio voice.
You're good at that.
No.
Todd Briggeth isn't in trouble, by the way.
Oh, yeah, sure, you bet. But no, I think it's working very well, and, I mean, the time, it, it's flying by. Another solution, could you have four council meetings a month? And then the fifth week, you're off, or? It seems like everyone wants to hear everything at one time, well, don't have a committee meeting, then have a council meeting and get it done.
Mr. Mayor and city council members, I, I'd probably be smart if I deferred this to the city attorney, but I would think that the meeting twice a month is in the city charter.
Yeah, you'd have to charter.
And what's not in the charter is the committee process or the direct, you know, staff to city council process or the work session, that's not in the charter, but the, the meeting, the first and, and third Mondays of the month is probably kind of set in concrete.
Okay. But yeah, it's kind of a disservice for the employees now, they're done working at 4:30 or 4:45, and they got to stay around for an hour or two hours because they have to work around the council's hours that they can be available on. That's the thing, if you're running for council, you know what you're supposed to do. You shouldn't have to make seven other council people and staff work around your schedule. That's disheartening to me. But I like the system the way we have it right now.
Our city attorney, Mr. Scott, do you have a, a opinion on a question posed by our city administrator, followed by Councilmember Plowman?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, the, so everyone has the same information. The charter establishes a minimum requirement that the council meet at least twice every month at such times as the council determines, so the council, if it saw fit to do so, could meet more frequently.
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to dive a little bit back into the history of not necessarily Wilmer's councils and commissions, but just the, the reason that, that committees, commissions, and boards are appropriated in the first place and the original intent, if, if one reads back the history of them, and I understand the, the desire for efficiency and whatnot, but that was the original intent for having councils, different commissions and committees and whatnot. They're a part of businesses, they're a part of structured government, it's a, it's a, it's a very well-known part of the, the current system, and the reason for that is because just that, efficiency. Typically, there's, there's so much work that needs to be done, so many hours worth of work, that one body and one body alone cannot do that, and so that's why, say, in Congress, that's why there's a, a House Judiciary Committee, for example, they focus on their issues. Why there's a Finance Division, they focus on their issues. That's why all the separate divisions exist, just so that everybody can, can work and do justice to the, to the actual topics that they're working on. And I guess the, the question that I would pose then, and, and I understand the, the need and the desire for efficiencies, and I'm not against that whatsoever, but then I would ask, okay, then how, how, number one, if we were going to switch, how could we ensure that the council is actually going to be given the correct number of hours that we need to address all of these topics? And then secondarily, what happens to all of our other boards and commissions that are currently in place? Should we, should all of those be dissolved as well? I don't think that's even a doable, practical idea. As Mr. Fagerly mentioned, I believe the way that, that we're operating right now is substantially different than how it was a year ago at this time. I believe we're operating more efficiently, and I like the way that things are going now, and I think our trajectory is a good one, and I would hate to see us, and this is just my personal perspective, I would hate to see us change course of direction when we are actually making progress in an area. I would like to see it through, and if it can't be seen through and if things actually move in a backwards motion, then I'll gladly be the first one to eat crow. But we are, we are moving in a good direction, I think our minutes will reflect that, I believe the video will reflect that, and I think, I think we should continue on. Thank you.
Okay, so, Councilmember Osmus, and then I'm, if anybody's willing to make a motion, I'm ready to entertain that, or if there's not a motion, I'm okay with that as well. Councilmember Osmus.
I guess I have three things. One, as far as efficiencies, I, I think of the, the public and the citizens and working with the council, and I think we do a disservice to them when they have to go to several and numerous different committees to, to make a point or to, to get support for some project that they might be trying to put before the council, and they end up having to go to two or three different committee meetings. I don't think that that's consumer-friendly in our business dealings with the public, and the other thing is just the general public and transparency. And I just remember before I got on the council, I liked to listen to the council meetings to learn what was happening, and we may say that right now, things are moving good, that we've had a good system, but basically, we took all of the information and put it into a consent agenda. And yes, that made it efficient, and we're only having maybe 40-minute city council meetings on a Monday night, but the general public is, is out of the loop on any information that, that we're agreeing on that consent agenda, where if we did a direct staff to council and had all of that information at the council meeting, I feel like the public then knows what's going on, and we are more transparent. The other thing, as far as having our plate full and taking that on right now, a transition, I think we have Mr. Grammets for another month to have a couple of council meetings to work on that project and work on that process, so that when we do have a new city administrator, it is already in place, and it isn't something that we have to add on top of everything else that we're trying to do new with new positions being filled.
Anybody that wishes to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution eliminating the current city council committee structure and implement a direct city administrator to city council agenda process. Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Davis, second by Councilmember Osmus. We've had discussion on the item, are we ready to vote? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
No.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Nay.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
No.
Nelson.
No.
The motion passes.
It's four and four.
Four and four.
I have four ayes and four nays.
Right, the mayor supports the motion.
Mayor, okay.
Next we have community pride announcements. I just want to thank this council. For the last 18 months, my family and I have had some struggles, and you as council members, I believe every one of you have stood up and attended a meeting for me or covered me on a committee or something like that. I want to give a special thanks to Councilmember Fagerly for standing in for me countless numbers of times and presided over meetings for me and did great work, so I, I, my, my family and I are forever indebted to this city as we always have been, and I just wanted to announce that publicly and thank the community for their support. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Committee meetings, or, no, what are we doing now, then?
Uh, Mr. Grammets, do you want to go with the committee for one more cycle, or do you want to?
I believe in the resolution, we had a start date of May 1st, I think.
Okay.
And so we'll go through the, the month of April and...
So then after the next council meeting, we'll start with the new structure?
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, just to be very anal about this, the resolution says May 4th.
Okay, that would be the next council meeting, May 4th? Okay, council, um, May 4th. Okay, public work safety.
Thursday the 22nd, 4:30.
Finance?
Thursday the 22nd at 5:45, and it is a request for full council. Finance, full council meeting.
Community development?
No meeting.
Labor?
Mr. Grammets, do you think we need a labor meeting?
At the present time, I don't believe we need one. We will have, obviously, for the city administrator review, one on the 26th, next, next Monday, but after that, we'll, we'll have to see how the other positions are progressing to see if we need a labor meeting.
Councilmember Nelson, have a question. So, the, um, help me with what the meeting is on the 26th, I'm not understanding.
That's actually the full city council meeting to review the applicants for city administrator, 7:00. Yes?
Yeah, I said I was available for either day, I didn't know the date that it was set. It's the 26th?
Yep, 26th.
7:00 p.m.? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
So, just a clarification then, so for the month of May, we're only going to have two council meetings and no committee meetings.
That's correct. Any committee meetings after May 4 would no longer be scheduled, so... That's correct. Any committee meetings after May 4 would no longer be scheduled, so those committee meetings up to the next city council meeting would be, but after that...
Understand that, but we're going to go to two council meetings that start at 7:00, and our end time has been 11:00. Is that what we're still planning to do?
I'm not planning to do 11:00, Councilor Nelson. I'll do the 7:00, but I don't plan on staying till 11:00. But the deadline, I believe that is self-regulated by the city council, is 11:00. That's the latest you can go.
Right, so you can talk about the item that is being discussed past 11:00, but you cannot add a new item after 11:00?
Correct.
So, can I ask one more question? We will not be going through consent items, then? Any action items that were done by committee meetings will be done as action items at a council meeting, not on the consent agenda?
I wouldn't go so far as to say that, because under a normal process, there still can be a consent agenda, which are the non-controversial minutes and other boards...
I'm talking about action-spending-money items. That's what was always triggered at council meetings, so we will be doing those as action items during the council meeting.
Correct. Unless they're so insignificant that everybody would vote for it no matter what happened, you know?
I'm just going by what my understanding of what our requirements are, the way we had to process things with finance and with other committee meetings, the action items that we had to take, to me, we haven't made any changes in that, so they will all be done at the council meeting.
Yes, we'll start with that, and if you guys, as a council, decide that you want to draw a line in the sand and say these things can be consent in the future, that's up to you.
So as, so as an example, if an item goes to Public Works and has a financial requirement to it, and then has to go to Finance to get approved to pay, that would only be one action item. It would not be two action items, so you would not talk about it over here, and then talk about it in the same meeting over here. That would be, they would be comprised together.
Right, but that's how it was being done now, it was only if there was a question about how it was going to be financed, where they're two separate action items.
So that's the way that, from what I understand, the way it'll be going forward. We'll have to just try it and see how it works. Councilmember Osmus.
And I believe councilmember Davis also has a comment. Couldn't we consider starting at 5:00 or 6:00?
That's what I was trying to ask the question while we were having the motion, and the motion's done, so.
But it didn't have a time in there when we had to start. I mean, to me, we made the motion to go to it, but I think we can have further discussion about what time we should start. If we start at 5:00, go till 7:00, take a 15-minute break, and then continue, I mean, I think those are things we can decide here.
I think that we should respect all the council members to see whether that schedule will work and how we need to work.
Councilmember Davis.
I was just going to suggest starting at an earlier time.
Can you look at that, councilmember, or city administrator Grammets, and just see what staff's thoughts are on if we need to start earlier, or how we can get to that?
And Mr. Mayor and city councilmember, I worked for a community that was meeting at 7:00, and then the city council said, we'd like to move it up, and so they went to 6:30. They did that for about two years, and they said, I think 6:00 is a better number, and they did that for like two or three years, and eventually it got to 4:30. And the reason for that was, staff got off work at 4:30, they could just go into the council meeting, that's the end of their day. I personally believe it was the city council members who wanted to go home and sit on their deck and enjoy the evening. So the time that you start is really, I believe that's a city council decision. If you want to start at 6:00, then that works great. I do know that there are some, you know, council members that continue to work, and maybe 5:00 is a little aggressive for those positions, but 6:00 or 6:30, I mean, those are your decisions. It's whatever you come to as a consensus and feel that you can all make. I don't place that onto staff so much, we'll meet whenever. What staff is no longer doing, excuse me, what staff is no longer doing is doing eight additional agendas a month, and in giving up eight agendas, I don't think they're going to be too concerned about, was it hour and 45 instead of two hours, you know, at the council meeting? They're giving up a lot of staff time by not having to do those agendas, and that's one of the efficiencies that, you know, we were talking about earlier, the city council may have some efficiencies, but it's the staff that has the greatest amount of efficiencies in going direct. And so, time-wise, I would say whatever you would like to do, that's your decision. It's really not, as far as I'm concerned, a staff issue. The evening meetings here are scheduled for us and us only, so there's no conflict for this location, you know, to start at 6:00 or 6:30. Those are all, you know, potential times to start.
So, city attorney Scott, can you review that? I know that we're going to have to make an amendment to our rules, and so can you review that, and then also review the start time, if we could change that to 6:00 p.m. instead of the 7:00 p.m. start?
Yes, Mayor, and members of the council, I agree completely with the city administrator's comments that that's a council decision to make. Procedurally, if the council wishes to meet at a time other than 7:00 p.m., we would just need to do a resolution amending the resolution you adopted at your organizational meeting, setting your schedule of regular meetings for the year, because I think that specified 7:00 meetings, first and third Mondays, except after holidays. So that's an easy thing to do, if the council wishes to do that, we will prepare a resolution consistent with whatever that direction is.
Okay. Did you have something else, Mr. Fagerly?
Well, it just seems like we're going back in time, because that's the way the city council operated in the 60s, and then they went to committee meetings in the 70s because their meetings would last till midnight or after. So I hope it works, so.
Okay, additional comments? We entertain a motion to adjourn.
12.
Second.
We're adjourned.